The Planning and Zoning Commission is an independent advisor body of the City of Ames City Council. The Planning and Zoning Commission members are volunteers of the community and not part of the city administration. Planning and Zoning Commission is supported by staff from the city's planning division. The commission is responsible for recommendations on matters involving subdivisions, annexations, master plans, major site development plans, amendments to the zoning ordinance, and comprehensive plan amendments. We make our recommendations based on city codes, the facts presented, and input from the public. As an advisory commission, we welcome all comments regarding the proposed item. Please direct your input to the commission. If the proceedings become lengthy, we may ask that the comments be focused on new information not previously presented. You may speak only once on an agenda item. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker information card and present it to the recording secretary. We ask that you come to the microphone to speak so that all comments may be recorded. The order of the proceeding for each item on the agenda will be as follows. City staff will be present, will present the staff report regarding the agenda item. Commission members will have an opportunity to ask questions of city staff. The applicant will be invited to make a statement regarding the request. Commission members will have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. Members of the audience will be invited to come forward, offer comments and questions. Once public comment is closed, city staff and the applicant will have an opportunity for concluding remarks. The commission will discuss the application based on all presentations and any comments given and come to a recommendation for city council. Discussion may include further questions of city staff and the applicant for clarification. With that, we'll move to the first item on the agenda, which is the introduction of commission members.
Julie Winter.
Mike Clayton.
Mike Sullivan.
Matthew Voss.
Jim Blickenstorf.
All right. With that, we'll move to approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And then we'll move to approval of the minutes of October 18th, 2023. Have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approval of the minutes is approved. Now, we have public forum. Is there anyone from the public would wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum. And we'll move on to zoning text amendment on accessory dwelling units, ADU standards.
Good evening. We're happy to have this item come before you tonight. As you will recall, we met with you in October to give you a preview of what was to come, reviewing the proposed standards for accessory dwelling units. And we also talked about duplexes at that meeting. After that time, after October 4th, we met with city council to provide them with the summation of public input that had been gathered. And we didn't touch on that too much with you because we had not presented it to the city council. But the public input was pretty much divided between options. There wasn't one clear, you know, the city wasn't weighted in one way or the other. There wasn't overwhelming majority. And we did provide you with some information on that if you're interested. And it is also on our website. With the consideration of the public input and staff review of the standards on October 10th, the city council directed staff to proceed with preparing the draft ordinances that would be consistent with their draft standards that had been discussed. So a summation, I'll provide a quick summation of some of those standards for you, pretty much as we talked about back in October. 1ADU would be allowed on a single-family residential lot. That's the primary residence of the property owner. ADUs will only be permitted in the following zoning districts: RL, residential low-density zone; RM, residential medium-density zone; UCRM, urban core residential medium-density zone; FSRL, suburban residential low-density zone; FSRM, suburban residential medium-density zone; and FPRD, planned residence district. The ADU requirements include the standards that already exist for accessory building requirements such as maximum size, height, setbacks, and location in the rear yard. And those are found in section 29408. The new standards that are unique to ADUs are proposed to be in section 29409, which will immediately follow the other section. Unique elements of an ADU are the allowance far to be a dwelling. Currently, we do not allow a second dwelling on residential properties that are just single-family. It would be a necessary to a single-family dwelling. And as a dwelling, it's limited to a maximum of one bedroom. It must have cooking, sanitation, and sleeping areas, and be independently functional from the primary house with its own utility services. It does not have to have independent metering. So just to clarify that. Bedrooms are defined term in zoning ordinance, so it would only allow one bedroom. And if they were proposing a room that could be perceived or utilized as a bedroom, that would not be allowed. One additional parking space is also required, and a paved sidewalk connection to either the home or to the parking area. The draft regulations allow ADUs through the construction of a new detached building or through the conversion of an existing detached garage. The building has to be set upon a permanent foundation. All new buildings and conversions are subject to residential building code requirements. Again, the owner must reside on the site. We would require a recorded affidavit from the property owner that would be a notice of limitations confirming their understanding of rental and occupancy requirements. Currently, within chapter 29, no additional building for human habitation may be located anywhere on the same lot. The amended text will clarify what's meant by human habitation. And it would still allow pool houses to include a bathroom. But otherwise, an accessory building with plumbing must either fully meet the ADU requirements or be a pool house. In the historic district, we met a couple times with the Historic Preservation Commission. And the first time we met with them, we discussed the requirements for new construction of an ADU within the historic district because there's some design criteria that didn't seem to work very well for accessory buildings, but it really wasn't clarified. So the new language helps to clarify how that's applied. And some of those things would be such things as the raised foundation or two-story requirement. And the porch requirement is also a consideration as well as the footprint requirement. So there's been some tweaks to the porch and the footprint, but the other is clearly spelled out that they don't have to do it. Then we returned on November 13th to present draft language that also included a review process for an alteration to contributing garages. So in your historic district, you have contributing structures that are very important to the integrity of the district. And so we addressed how contributing garage would be approached. And so there's language there. And additionally, there's some clarification language that's proposed to be amended within the section 3110. That's the certificate of appropriateness. So when we met with the Historic Preservation Commission, they discussed at length the proposed amendments. And they voted 5-0 to approve modifications to the proposed text. And those modifications are included in the attachment you have. The exception is they also included new language that's on page three of your report. Alteration of non-contributing garage to an ADU when it's located on a property with a contributing structure would require HPC approval of a certificate of appropriateness. That actually would be a new requirement. I don't think they were understanding that. I think they thought that was clarifying language. But because of that, we're going to return to them Monday night to verify their direction on that language. And staff does not support that. So it's not really part of what's included as proposed text for you. And I believe that concludes the summary. Staff does recommend approval. ADUs are not currently allowed in Ames, so this would introduce a new type of housing. Most single-family properties that are not restricted by private covenants should be able to take advantage of the new standards. It will be difficult for properties that have a one-car garage and/or small rear yard to meet the requirements. But we believe they're a good balance to start our process of allowing accessory dwelling units. The standards are in draft form, final language. We'll be going to the city council next week. And so you could watch for that. And we do recommend alternative one, which is approving the draft text amendments to chapter 29 and 31 implementing accessory dwelling units. Happy to answer any questions.
I guess I had one quick question, just on the last page of the PowerPoint for outreach that you did, just thinking about, and I may have missed that detail somewhere. But I'm curious, with relation to the rental code, it says that the ADU would have to be registered as a rental and probably go through all the normal standards that any other rental would have to go through. Are these units going to be subject to, wasn't there some sort of rental cap that was introduced in certain neighborhoods?
Yes. So actually, an ADU does not have to be registered as a rental unless it's intended to be rented. If you're just having family members living there, you don't have to register it. But only one rental can be on the property. And yes, the occupancy cap does apply. And that's probably spelled out more clearly for the city council next week in the draft language.
There's not technically a cap on the number of rentals. There's a cap on increase in the number of bedrooms in homes to increase your maximum occupancy.
Okay. Gotcha.
And that's the near-campus neighborhood reference that's here. And just to give a heads up, that last slide, when we wrote that, we hadn't really got through chapter 13 codiments. We are not, at this point, proposing annual verification of residency. So that bullet's there, but that's not in the proposed ordinance. It does still, the way it's drafted, we're proposing that the owner must always reside on site for it to ever be, for any structure, either structure to be rented also.
I just have kind of one question. It's about one provision. Well, it's on page seven of the packet, but under seven occupancy there. It's that last sentence, "Properties owned by an LLC or other non-natural person entity do not qualify as owner occupied." I was just wondering, I had a few questions on that, I guess, because, so is it possible, I think it's possible for someone that has their home in an LLC to also occupy it, correct?
That is correct. However, if it is an LLC, we would not count them as being eligible for that owner occupied provision. So they wouldn't be able to rent the ADU.
They wouldn't be able to build an ADU.
They wouldn't be able to.
Nor would they be able to rent it.
Right.
And what's the, I guess, what's the reasoning behind that?
The intent is that the owner resides on site. And we mean for natural people to be that, not for corporations, not for absentee people to operate through a shell of some type. So that's the only legitimate way and consistent way for us to administer that expectation.
Okay. Would, I guess, the other question I have is about non-natural person entity. I guess, what other entities would that include? And just the one that comes to my mind, I guess, is a living trust, because there's a lot of people that have their homes in a living trust, but also occupy them. So would that be included as non-natural person entity? I mean, maybe that needs a definition, I guess, is what I'm thinking.
So it is a term that's used in the rental code.
Okay.
Owner is defined there. So this is kind of a crossover with that. But I probably can't answer to the greatest depth of all the legal options there are to own something and not be a natural person. In general, a trust would not count. That's my understanding. An LLC would not count. Those are the two that we've talked about.
Okay. Yeah. I guess I'd hesitate to, I guess I know people that have their home in their living trust. And I guess I would hope that we could, if there's a reason to allow that to be carved out, I guess, because I think a lot of people do that. But that would be my only comment. But I don't know how everyone else feels on that.
But just because it's in a trust doesn't mean...
They would still have to occupy it.
But there, right, there's a trustee that's in charge of the trust. And that doesn't necessarily mean that you are the, it's just really hard to reconcile with the concept of being the owner when the trustee does not have to be present with the trust, right? Like, you could assign that to your child or to someone else to run the trust. You're not, it's not as simple as just saying the trustee has to be present. That might help some of them, but it would not necessarily address all the situations. So that's why we landed on the current version, which is literally the owner has to be present.
Okay.
Not someone affiliated with the owner or affiliated with the trustee that administers it. That's where we landed on it.
Okay.
And honestly, for the most part, we're concerned about absentee rental corporations, owning and running property. That's the number one thing that we see.
And it's probably much easier to enforce if you just have a clear definition and can...
Yeah. And staff can't spend the energy of trying to verify who is there. And then does the trustee change? There's just, we need to be able to simply administer it. And that's why we're proposing this.
That makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
I'm curious about parking, which I know you said was the topic most brought up, concerned by people. So my understanding, an ADU requires another parking space, but it can't be in front of or behind one of the other required spaces from a principal structure, right? Is there any, I can imagine where that would be especially useful for ADUs that are being rented. But in my mind, especially since Kelly, I think you said it at our, the last time we talked about ADUs, a lot of these might be used just for additional habitable space for the family or additional habitable space like that. So would there be some flexibility to modify that language to only apply to rentals, but for ADUs that aren't being rented out, which I imagine would usually be close family members, allow that ADU parking space to be in tandem?
So there's two different things there. So are you saying that the parking space is only required if it's a rental? Are you saying that it's still required, but unless it's a rental, you can park in tandem?
The latter. So yeah, still require an ADU parking space, but only if it's a rental would the not-in-tandem requirement be there?
I'm not 100% sure that we can do that. There is a, I have to look at, there's a section in Iowa code that, I don't know, that actually applies. There are some limitations of treating rentals different than other single-family dwellings. And like, right now, all of the rental standards that you see in, all of the dwelling standards in zoning apply whether you're rental or owner occupied. There's no extra things that apply to you in the rental code. I mean, if the commission was to recommend it, I mean, we would look at it. And if council wanted to go that route, we would see what we could do. I think, again, a lot of this is written on how to most simply administer things. And that transition, yeah, if that was the recommendation, we'd have to look at it. So I guess the concern gets to be, we wanted, whenever an ADU was built, we wanted it to be able to be rented. So therefore, that meant all conditions on the site met code at the time you approved the ADU and didn't hold anything back as being, oh, can't rent it because you didn't, you didn't put this in or you didn't do this. So if we went that route, and you didn't have the ability to add this parking space, but we permitted the ADU, we feel as staff, we would get stuck with someone that's like, well, wait a minute. Yeah, you can't add, you don't have space to add it. Sorry, we let you build an ADU, but you can never rent it. That was our concern. We wanted everybody to be treated equally. I understand that could give some flexibility for a few people that didn't intend to rent it when they first built it. There's maybe ways to do it, that you have to have the space, but not build it possibly. But I guess, if that was the direction of the commission, then we'd have to recommend, see what council wants to do with that and how we would deal with it. But my number one concern would be that it couldn't, it didn't have the space to ever meet the standard, yet we allowed the ADU to be built. That's problematic for us.
Yeah, that concern definitely makes sense to me.
So if you built an ADU as a pool house, you would have to build a parking spot no matter what?
If you were a pool house, you won't be allowed to be an ADU unless you have the parking space. So that, you can think of it this way, an accessory building that's a pool house can have a bathroom. No other accessory building is allowed to have a bathroom unless it's a fully compliant ADU. A pool house itself would not trigger a parking space unless it otherwise met the ADU standards. So you won't also be able to claim, I'm just a pool house, if you meet all the definitions of the ADU. That won't work either. If you have a bedroom, a kitchen, and a bathroom, you can't say I'm a pool house. You are an ADU. And you have to have a pool.
Anyone have any other questions for staff?
I think just in general, good job, staff. Thanks.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll just open the public comment period. Does anyone from the audience want to offer public comment? Seeing none, we'll close that. Is there any other comments that the commission would like to make on this agenda item? Okay. Does anyone have a motion that they would like to make?
Good move. Recommend the approval of alternative one, that the Ames Planning and Zoning Commission recommends that the city council approves the draft text amendments to chapter 29 and chapter 31, included as attachment A and attachment B, implementing accessory dwelling units or ADUs.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes for alternative one. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to the next agenda item, which is zoning text amendment on vehicle parking and storage standards.
Good evening. So these changes stem from the recently adopted Property Maintenance Code, which you might have heard of. It was an effort to make a more comprehensive public nuisance chapter in the Ames Municipal Code. That chapter has some overlap with our zoning standards in terms of vehicle storage and vehicle parking requirements, as well as other common terms used, such as the actual word vehicle and how it's defined. So city council compared those overlaps and gave us direction on how to proceed to amend both the zoning code, which you have before you tonight, as well as some other sections of code, which you don't have before you tonight, but the council will be considering as well. Other sections of our code that aren't under zoning aren't under the purview of the commission. So we're just brought forth the zoning changes for your consideration tonight. I think the main takeaway is that these aren't substantial changes that will affect how we administer the code, while there are some changes that we'll discuss about how junked vehicles can be stored or recreational vehicles. It really will just help clarify our administration of those provisions because there were some inconsistencies in the terms used in the code before. So before I get into the main amendments, and on that point of some inconsistencies that we looked at, there's a difference between parking and storage. So when I say storage, I mean over 72 hours. And parking is anything under 72 hours. So we've got different provisions now for parking versus storage of recreational vehicles, for instance. And you'll also see, we went through the code and made sure those terms weren't used interchangeably. They were used intentionally. Another item we'll talk about is the idea of a required parking space. And that's a parking space that you're required to provide. So for instance, homes, single-family homes are required to provide two parking spaces. So anything in excess of that isn't a required parking space. So when we talk about restrictions on parking in a required space, we're only talking about those ones that you have to have. You know, if you have space to park three vehicles, then you've got an excess. And one of those spaces isn't required. So you might be able to park. you know, a vehicle in that extra space. So the main two changes are about junked vehicle storage and RVs. So currently junked vehicles, which are inoperable or unregistered, that's a definition we're taking out of the property maintenance code and putting into the zoning code. Those are not permitted to be stored more than 30 days. That's what our current code says. City council directed us to allow one junked vehicle to be stored for no more, no more than 30 days. That's, that's the new proposed ordinance. The property maintenance code separately does require screening. So if it's in a rear or side yard, it could be behind a wall or a fence. In the front yard, it would be required to be under a tarp. So I know you didn't see that in here, but that's a separate code section. This provision is more restrictive than the current provision because there isn't that numeric standard of only one junked vehicle for no more than 30 days right now. It's kind of more open-ended. So it's really a clarification on the number that you can have stored. And then with recreational vehicles, right now you can have one parked behind the front setback. City council directed us to clarify that you can have one parked for unloading or loading, but you can also have one stored. That is something that we see around town pretty commonly. And so we wanted to clarify in the code that that's allowed, that does have to be in a rear or a side yard. And that does have to be in an approved surface or paved as well. Trash receptacles is another change with, with the property maintenance code adoption. There wasn't a restriction on screening for residential containers, but our zoning code did have one. It didn't accept residential containers. So we introduced a provision to accept those from our screening requirements. And then I won't go through each definition, but we added several definitions from the property maintenance code and clarified others that are in our existing zoning code. For instance, better defining what accessory parking is versus commercial parking, where you might have a short-term or a long-term parking lot. And better defining what a commercial truck is and what equipment is, rather than just having one definition for those terms, so that we can more clearly administer our code. With that, we are recommending alternative one, which is to recommend these changes to the city council. And I'm happy to take any questions or, you know, there's tables in the report or go through any parts of the ordinance with you.
The only question that came to mind when I was thinking about storage of the recreational vehicles, boats, trailers, and now we're allowing them to be stored in a rear or side yard. Is there any indication from staff as far as whether the storage of that can go right up against the lot line? Or is that storage subject to setback?
Yeah, there isn't a setback requirement that we're proposing. Right now you can pave to the property line as well.
Okay.
And there's a little distinction there, probably between our commercial zones function versus residential. So if you're in a, a commercial zone, outdoor display and storage has to meet building setbacks. But in the residential zones, we allow paving with no setback. So if we're going to allow you to pave a driveway, then we feel like we have to allow you to keep that vehicle on the driveway we allowed you to pave in the first place. So I think that little distinction there, residential gets a little bit more favorable treatment than a commercial site does.
So is the, the 30 days cumulative per vehicle per calendar year, is that, is that language, is that consistent with the, the chapter? That was part of the chapter, is chapter 30? Is that?
No, so chapter 30 was, will also be updated so that they match.
Okay.
Right now, junked vehicles stored on private property for more than 48 hours are considered a nuisance. So the, the property maintenance code doesn't, doesn't have the 30-day limit yet.
The question I have about that, I guess, is the, so I understand what that means, cumulative per vehicle per calendar year. I'm wondering how, so how will that be enforced, I guess, versus like a straight 30-day limit? I can see a lot of these junked vehicles, I think a lot of the new, the ones that are an issue in people's minds are ones that are there for not, not intermittently throughout the calendar year, but for, you know, a long period of time. So I guess I'm just thinking like, what's the intent of, of that provision, the cumulatively part?
Yep, so that you can't remove it and, and bring it right back to your property. I know, I think a lot of the times when we think about parking enforcement, imagine someone having their tires chalked and then they just move it forward two inches. So we want it to prevent that type of situation with storage.
Okay.
So you couldn't just take it off-site and, and bring it right back or move it around on the site either. We put that provision in there too.
Sure.
You couldn't just park it in your side yard instead of your rear to get around that 30-day requirement. And in my experience with enforcement of vehicles, I think we usually take a VIN number to track it because they might not be registered. You might not have plates.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. So we, we spent a lot of time trying to make sure we, we, we don't get gamed.
Right.
Which is what most, a lot of code enforcement can turn into when it's a, a time-based standard. So the parking is one we can't ever get away from. I drive off my property and I come back on, I moved it, I restarted the clock.
Yeah.
Junked vehicle, we wanted to be sure that you couldn't drag it somewhere and then say it's a new 30 days and never really change it.
Sure.
Now, if you keep it in your garage, if it's indoors, none of this applies, right? This is all outdoor storage is what we're really regulating. So if you have a garage and you have space to store a junked vehicle in it, that's not prohibited.
Okay.
So can I ask a question about regular vehicles? I'm just looking at table four. Is it, is it true that I can't park a car in my driveway?
Table?
For a period of time longer than 72 hours?
No, we, so I think table four is about outdoor storage. It's on page five. Our intent was not to, to regulate how long you could park your car on your driveway. I think there are, what you see there on the restrictions on storage are more about in commercial zones, you can only create outdoor storage of vehicles in certain zoning districts. You wouldn't want, for instance, in a neighborhood commercial area, there to be, you know, just dead storage of vehicles. So that's what that outdoor storage provision is referencing in this table.
So what area of the property are you affecting in the code currently?
We're not proposing any changes to storage of just regular vehicles.
Again, I wouldn't use that word, the parking.
Oh.
So we, so the one part that's really tricky here is there used to be certain standards that no longer exist or were modified with chapter 30. There used to be a standard about keeping a car for 14 days on a driveway, even though the zoning ordinance would have said that's storage in the first place. So that we're still trying to reconcile these, these things that were deleted with what council meant to allow versus how zoning, which is really about the development and use of property versus these, these nuisance issues. I'm not sure I, I would say that you can park a car indefinitely
In your required.
in your driveway in a required parking space. That would at some point become storage. So you can't store unlimited number of vehicles just on your property because that would be outdoor storage.
Yeah.
And I believe that is no change to the current zoning language. But now it may be enforced differently because of that nuisance code change that used to have a different idea of what that meant.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I thought we left that silent on that issue. The change that we made was on page nine, said it used to say outdoor storage of inoperable or unregistered vehicles was a prohibited use, but now we struck out that inoperative or unregistered vehicle. We, we struck out everything but the word vehicle. I was wrong.
Yeah. So, so I'm just wondering, the way I read the table, it, it seems like a vehicle is not permitted except as part of approved outdoor storage, which
Permitted to be parked, yeah.
So in, in a commercial zone, you could have outdoor storage of a, of a vehicle. It's the residential property where we don't permit outdoor storage, which is the catch that, that you're talking about. So there's a distinction between the residential and the commercial site.
This, this portion of the code only applies to commercial.
The only place you could be permitted to have outdoor storage for a vehicle is in a commercial or an industrial zone, not a residential zone.
What if you just like parked your car in your driveway for like two weeks while you went on vacation? Would that technically be, I mean, it's not going to move. You wouldn't
Yeah, I think that's what I'm driving at. That's, it sounds like that's not allowed right now or maybe with these changes.
In the zoning ordinance, it technically probably was not allowed previously. And then there was this other parking provision in a different part of the code that no longer exists. And I think we're back to the default of what the zoning ordinance says, which is the 72-hour rule.
Sure, but I'm, I'm out of town like almost every week for four days and my car is usually in my driveway. Even though I have two required parking spots in the garage, maybe I'm lazy and I leave in the driveway. Am I going to come home to a violation as a result of this? Or am I already in violation without these changes and I'm just unaware? I find it
I, I think you're technically, so this is that, the whole reason we're doing this is what people perceive the language meant versus what it actually said is what we're trying to clean up. So I, I think the language is the same, but it would result in potentially what you said, that you could get a citation for storage of a vehicle.
See, I find it perfectly reasonable to regulate storage and movement of a vehicle in the public driveway. Entirely unreasonable to regulate it on private property. Except for the fact that space set aside for required parking in a structure should be used only for required parking and not for other purposes. That's in a lot of city codes. I think it's in Ames too, right?
Yep. Yeah, we have a standard.
You can't set up a wood shop in your garage and then park your cars in your driveway.
Right.
If you only have a two-car garage. Because you have to have two spots, right?
Right, but you'd be able to do tandem. So if you had a two-car garage, one space in the garage would meet it and then one in the driveway would meet it and you would have the free use of the other half of your garage.
Okay, but you couldn't use the whole garages.
Probably not, unless you had a, you can, yes, you can, because the parking can be on the driveway.
But not for more than 72 hours if this
As there, yeah, right, that becomes storage. I'm just saying the required spaces, there's, there's different ways to look at how that's done. But you do have to have one that's outside of the front yard, which could be a garage space or it could be uncovered.
Okay.
I get what you're saying. I, I don't know that I have any other answer for you, then I think this is how the code is, is drafted. And I'm not disagreeing or agreeing that it's, it's right or wrong, but I would, I understand what you're saying and, and how that is gonna, how that looks right now. I think what I'm saying is that unless it was changed, I, I agree, I think it says a citation could be written for someone that leaves an operable vehicle just sitting in their driveway for the whole summer.
Or for three days.
Well, yeah, for more than three days.
Yeah.
Right. Not 90 days, three days. I would agree. I think that's how it's written right now.
So there is alternative two that you could, you know, recommend the adoption of this ordinance with amendments. So that would be in section, it's on page nine, again, under subparent three. And then Roman numeral three, if you wanted to make that change, you could just strike the word vehicle.
So. So maybe we
And we could look at, make sure that would take care of it.
I mean, it seems to me like it would make, I mean, I, I didn't read it that way, but now that you brought, I'm glad you brought that up because that's concerning to me because lots of people in Ames park cars in their driveway for, and they sit there for more than 72 hours. So I guess if we're looking at this now, should we look at addressing that as well? I, I tend to lean towards, towards yes, but I don't know what, I, I don't know what the appropriate change would be, I guess, but.
You, you don't have to author the change. You just have to express what you're concerned about.
Sure. Yeah. Are there other questions for staff?
So on a separate issue about the junk vehicles on table one, how, how do these things, how do these tables stack? So I think what this is saying is I can store a junked vehicle on my property for no more than 30 days. I can park it in the front driveway because it's a, it's an improved surface. Okay? Can I only leave it there for 72 hours or can I leave it there for 30 days?
So you're going to be able to leave it there for 30 days.
So why would I be able to store an inoperable junked vehicle for 30 days, but a car I use all the time for only 72 hours?
You're going to get 30 days in a calendar year for that. So the reason that I have to say yes to that is because there's no way to really park a junk vehicle. It's not movable, right? It's not operable. By definition, it's not registered and it's not operable. So you can't really just park it. So we talked about that internally and there's no real way to say that you're parking it because it's not really a car that's able to be parked. It's a object that's being stored, happens to be a car in this case.
So shouldn't it, shouldn't under the proposed changes, shouldn't we say somewhere that an inoperable, inoperable vehicle is assumed to be stored? I mean, if it's, if it can't be parked, then it must be stored from the beginning. How are you going to start the clock on that?
From its, the first day it's present on the site starts the 30 days.
So.
So we're, we're saying if it's not an operable vehicle or a registered vehicle also, it can't be parked. It's not subject to the accessory parking definition. So it's an object that's being stored on your site for 30 days. And that could be anything. It wouldn't have to just be a junk vehicle, but that's the one you're trying to compare to an operable vehicle right now.
Was there any consideration given to adding language about a side or rear storage apartment with junk vehicle?
So the property maintenance code has additional storage provisions. Let me just pull it up.
Yeah. The current property maintenance code only allow you to have it uncovered or unscreened for 48 hours.
Yes.
If it, if it's covered or screened, then you can reach the maximum duration that the zoning ordinance allows of 30 days. That's the way it's currently written.
Okay. Not having read the actual language of the ordinance, is that, does it reference that? So it's clear to, to a resident that you can't just park a junk car in your driveway for 30 days, but it has to be screened, covered, et cetera?
It, it, there is a cross-reference to, um, let's see. The driveway material standards, let's see.
So the zoning ordinance won't say that. It will persist in the nuisance code. And it, and in all, the intent here is the nuisance code is the enforcement code of the city and citations should, if at all possible, will be written out of the standards of chapter 30. There will be a cross-reference here that talks about how storage, there's three things that are cross-referenced now. The outdoor lighting code, the RV parking situation, and then the outdoor storage wasn't. And that's one of the things we have to correct is how that relates to where things can be stored on improved surfaces, not just randomly across the property and under a tarp. So that's being coordinated, but the enforcement will really come through chapter 30, not through the zoning ordinance. So those, those, those aspects of it being, having a tarp over it or some other kind of screening mechanism will stay in chapter 30. Because in a commercial zone, those wouldn't be expectations, right? That's not, that's where, we think of it as principal uses and accessory uses in the zoning ordinance. The nuisance code is, is thinking of it differently.
So if we're saying 30 days for the So if we're saying 30 days for the junk vehicles in the standard, I understand that they kind of play with one another, that the nuisance code is going to be the main enforcement and then you fall back on the zoning code for any additional problems, I guess. But shouldn't we make those two say the same things so that we don't have discrepancies? Shouldn't it really just be a copy over of the language?
Let me just look at the language we drafted in 30.
Because I'll admit, this is, this is confusing now that we're getting into it. And it's not necessarily to say that, you know, honestly, most residents would learn about these regulations once they were out of compliance. But it's more so, how do you even, how do you enforce this? That's a, that's a big question now.
So we did provide a cross reference in chapter 30 in the draft that says, you know, you can store a vehicle for basically no more than 48 hours. Unless it's a junked vehicle within a garage or a junked vehicle concealed and enclosed behind an opaque wall or fence, or completely covered by a tight flitting cloth stored outdoors for no more than 30 days in compliance with the zoning code is how. The amendment to 30 is presently written.
Gotcha. Okay, so they kind of do cross reference them.
30 cross references the zoning code, just to show where that requirement is coming from.
Gotcha.
Um, but again.
They talk.
Yeah, but again, because the main code we'll use to cite residents for nuisances is chapter 30. That's where these other standards for screening are located.
Can you talk more about the 48 hours that you just mentioned there and how that relates to the 72 hours and the proposed changes?
Yeah, so that's just in the property maintenance code.
Essentially don't have to screen it until after 48 hours.
Yeah.
That's all it says.
Okay.
Okay, so say I buy an inoperable vehicle and I'm gonna store it in my driveway on one of my required parking spaces. I have two days to where I don't have to figure out whether or not it's got a cover on it or anything else. And I'm still in compliance with the property maintenance expectations. But this code is actually saying that I'm still in compliance with that for 72 hours. Or would I be technically cited if people are on compliance after that 48 hour clock hits to say, hey, you need to get this covered?
So you're saying you have an unscreened junk vehicle.
Forty eight hours.
For 48 hours.
You do not get 72, it's 48.
Okay.
Because again, you're storing something you're not parking.
Gotcha.
72 hours won't apply. So it's present on the site as storage. After 48 hours, someone can call and complain to the city. We can come out to your property and say, hey, you need to cover that. If you don't, we're going to give you a citation.
And then.
Or move it.
Say I cover it and then 30 days passes. My neighbor calls again and says, hey, this is still not figured out. I'm looking at the zoning code and I see that you're not in compliance. Then that citation would come from this text that we're about to pass tonight.
Will still come out of chapter 30 by way of the standard in 29.
Gotcha, with a cross reference.
So the city attorneys say it, as long as you cross reference another chapter, all of the abatement and enforcement tools of chapter 30 are are applicable to the situation. So there's, there's, there's a section on enforcement in the zoning ordinance that's different than enforcement activities and abatement activities in chapter 30. We want to use the authority in 30 for all of those types of things that are are listed in 30. We don't want you to go to the ZBA to try to get variances for storing your car without a tarp. Like those are not the things that the zoning ordinance is about. So we'll use all of the enforcement activities in 30 whenever possible. And there's going to be a separate property maintenance appeals board. So if you, if you think staff's in error, not that the standard is wrong, but if you think staff is in error of how we're measuring it or judging the situation, there's an appeal board that you go to, not the zoning board of adjustment. It'll be a separate board.
Okay, so all that stuff stays in the nuisance abatement. Basically, that's the procedures.
Yep.
Okay.
And so as of now, right, it's going to be the lighting code. So if someone's causing a lighting nuisance, they have too much glare, it'll go through chapter 30 now, the storage of junk vehicles. Junk vehicles has always been in another part of the code. People didn't recognize that 29 also had it. So that's part of the confusion here is we had a separate vehicle, junk vehicle definition and expectations, all in another part of the codes. Once we started to clean everything up, I said, hey, wait a minute, you, you can't be unlimited storage here. That's not permitted. And then what was the other one I said that's cross referenced? Storage, oh, the RV parking.
And and home occupations.
Oh, we're going to add that enforcement on home occupations can also be done through chapter 30 rather than through a zoning violation. So there's it. And that was, I don't know, most of you, I think, or all of you were, not all of you, most of you were here. We just had to change our home occupation ordinance because state law changed the process. We used to go to ZBA to approve you. So then you came in to find what you're going to do and you had a permit and we all knew what you were going to do. Now we have to have standards that say you're allowed to do whatever you want, as long as you don't conflict with these standards. And there's only code enforcement, there's no permits. So zoning code enforcement is more laborious than chapter 30 process. So we want to, again, and all those things are nuisance things, like you're having outdoor storage, you're parking things here, you're operating out in your yard, things that are nuisance-ish. So that'll be now in chapter 30 as well as a cross reference.
Can I ask one more question about on street parking? Does the C code address how frequently a vehicle must be moved?
It does.
Yes.
Can you tell me the timeframe?
I believe it's 72 hours. It's either 48 or 72 hours, but it literally just has to move.
Right.
Not very.
I can vouch that it's 48 hours.
And it does not have to go.
I think it is 48.
Any particular distance, it just has to not be where it was when the police gave you your notice.
So if you had a student rental or a rental property where there were more occupants than required parking spaces, some of the occupants would be subject to a 72 hour rule. If they parked in required parking on the site and some of the residents would be required or subject to a 48 hour move if they are using on street parking.
Sometimes even worse than that, it's every other day if you lived in old town. City got a lot of revenue from a lot of people for that, myself included.
I also paved a lot of sidewalks, parking tickets in my time, but yeah. So does that seem, you know, consistent and fair and reasonable that it?
I'm not here to judge chapter 18 and the on-street parking requirements.
That's a great answer.
We were not charged with revisiting, there's a chapter 18.
I was ready for judgment.
Sorry. So right, we already had 72 hour in the zoning ordinance. That seems to be what council was comfortable with when we explained that. And 18 about the regulation of all right away is not, at this point in time, is not up for, for any other real situation. We're, we're dealing with some definition of a trailer, but that's the only thing that we're really looking at in 18. On, if you didn't know, on-street parking is a complicated issue for the city council.
Can imagine.
So I guess to move this along, the one thing that we did identify was kind of Jim, your comments on the driveway parking of a completely operable, basically a vehicle that does not meet the definition of junk vehicle. Is that something that we feel like we need to add a caveat here for, to do an alternate to?
Yeah, I'd like to see something.
Okay. How do we move this? I think you had mentioned it was on page nine.
Yeah, so you could just say, and it'd be alternative to, and the modification would be to allow storage of a vehicle in a in a, let me look.
I mean, I'm going to put words, let me put words in Jim's mouth. Because I get really nervous about where, what's going to happen. You might notice there's trickle effects through all this. And so I think what Jim was concerned about was that parking on a driveway with an operable vehicle was being treated the same as storage of an inoperable vehicle on the driveway. So I don't know that I would say like exempt it from all storage requirements. I think what we're saying is that you would exempt parking of a vehicle on a driveway from the storage limitations. That would then, if we can write that somehow, that would clean up the concern that you have that.
Yeah, or or just to state that this section does not apply to an operable licensed vehicle.
Yeah, so, well, a vehicle, we'll use our definition of what a vehicle is, but not going to make another one.
An operable vehicle in a required space?
No, on the driveway.
On the driveway.
Yeah, because otherwise you get into the street stuff and you start to.
I, I think that's what you're saying, because if I have a two car garage and a double wide driveway going to that garage, what's my required parking space? Is it the two in the garage? Is it the one, like, we can't get into that. So it's either on the driveway, it's allowed or not for, for code enforcement.
I guess I.
I understand what you're going for. I guess the, the question is that it's, this isn't, obviously, this is not about the average person's situation. This is about the unique situation that gets to the point where people are calling in code complaints and there's something that's unusual about it. So is there, we'll have to think about, is there a quantity of cars? Is there still some duration? At what point can cars just sit on your property? They have to get registered every year, so I still pay my registration if I never use it or move it.
I don't. That was the point I was going to bring up is like, even though it's, say you register your car and you park it in your driveway, can it sit there for a year? I don't think that's in line with maybe what we're also the, the direction for this too, so.
It may be more in line than what the 72 hour rule is right now. I, I don't know. So I guess that's kind of, I need to understand what the motion is, but I would start with what I said is you're, you're trying to exempt the parking of a vehicle on the driveway from storage requirements. I think that directly addresses what Jim was concerned about.
Yeah, but I do think that this issue is much more common than you're thinking. Both of my adjacent neighbors right now, one is a snowbird and he's already left and he has his vehicle parked in the driveway to that's going to be there for five months. And the other neighbor has regularly parks their car out, you know, they take that car every day, but and I can think of further down.
If they use it every day, it's not stored.
I guess that's true.
Right.
So one neighbor this way, and then there was another neighbor two down that something was going on, that there's been a Jeep parked in there for a long time. But again, it doesn't, nothing looks bad. I'm sure no one would call it in.
I guess I'm, I'm kind of leaning to, it sounds like there's a lot of, maybe a number of considerations that maybe are too numerous to consider at this meeting, I guess. I'm wondering if maybe we could direct staff. I mean, I'm thinking more like, I'm not sure we can come up with a great solution like tonight at this meeting.
What?
Because I, I mean, I, I don't want, I see that that argument, but I also see, I don't want it essentially indefinite. You know, if it's an operable registered vehicle, but it's not being moved for a long period of time, I think that's also a nuisance. There, it could be a nuisance. Or some people may consider it a nuisance, I guess. Maybe I'll put it that way.
So maybe we don't take the gray area away from the city and that like, honestly, no one's going to call in the circumstances I described in my neighborhood, right? But what if it did become a situation in which someone tried to get that enforced, then the city could.
Sure, absolutely.
Maybe we just pass it as.
And there are neighbors that, that for no legitimate reason have beef with their neighbors and will use that. I'm, I would, I mean, maybe they're not using it now, but it could happen and so.
Because they don't know it's in the rules.
Right, so I just, it seems like there needs to be thought out a little bit more. I, I'm not sure. I don't know. Unless someone has a great idea how that should be written.
We direct staff to think about it more.
I guess I would encourage you not to worry about the specifics, but forward the concern.
What is, what does that mean?
I, I mean, if if, if the commission believes that the, the current way it's written, that 72 hours is not palatable, it's not reasonable. That should be the, you could recommend that the city council consider removing that restriction and establish some other reasonable duration. If that's what the commission thinks is necessary, or the commission might just think removing the restriction is good enough and you don't have to have some other duration element to it. I don't know that it's, I mean, if, if you all agree that that's the issue, then council can wrestle with, is it, is it 72 hours or not? If it's not, what is it going to be? And, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but if they deleted the 14 day limit intentionally a month ago. Again, they, we, we reviewed this with them in October to get this moving, to come back to them. We did not give them this report. We said, here's four issues that don't line up.
Right.
We didn't have the answers to how exactly it would all get worded. What was the, again, the trickle down effect of once you put all these definitions and moved everything through the system? I don't know that they want 72 hours or not. And once they hear this comment, they might all have to decide what that means. I know they wanted to allow an RV to be parked on a driveway because that was specifically told to us.
They, they do want that.
Yes, that would, you, that was a long conversation on many nights. That one was clear. The parking of a regular vehicle was not directly discussed in October, so I don't know if they understood how this would all, again, how this would all come together once you put it together. Storage of vehicles, we talked about that. RV parking, the stuff in the middle was not a, a discussion point with them.
But wait a minute, they want an RV parked on a driveway because what we're passing is rear side yard.
That's storage, not parking.
Gotcha.
So you could only legally park your camper if it was beyond the front setback.
Okay.
You were never allowed to store it. So this code, the new things in this code are you now can legally park your camper on your driveway for 72 hours. And you can now legally store it for the winter, however, for more than 72 yards, as long as it's in the site or rear yard, just not on your driveway. So those are, that was the, yeah, that, that took a long discussion to wrap their heads around the difference between what people are trying to accomplish about parking versus storage.
Is there a different definition for vehicle and for recreation vehicle?
Yes.
Okay, you guys are pros at this, you know.
We are now. I didn't go to college for it. So we've always had the RV language about restricting habitation of them and then the storing of it. So the, the use, this is where we said, it just didn't seem like the usage of parking and storage was intentional all the time. So people just assumed they could store it in their backyard. I think we've probably even told people that. And then it came to light, like, well, those mean totally different things. And there's a prohibition of certain things, so now that's why we're cleaning it up.
So what makes the most sense to folks? Do we just punt this to council and say, we feel like 72 hours is a little fishy, consider something else? Or does anybody have a specific recommendation that they're wanting to recommend with this movement?
Like what you said first.
Just punt it to council and say something strange.
I liked how, I liked how Kelly phrased it, I guess, but yeah, the 70, yeah.
Well, the way Kelly phrased it, we'd be getting rid of it then, so then all this stuff would be.
Some sort of exemption for vehicles would, would be added for the storage on the driveway.
As long as the vehicle's registered. It's okay to park on your required parking space on the driveway only for whatever time you want, so long as the vehicle is not the definition of a junk vehicle. I mean, in some ways, that's was your.
Well, not just that, I, I could see a situation where a student might have a car and not move it during the week because of class or other obligations and then be in violation unintentionally and unaware because of the way this is written. And I think there's lots of other cases. You've got a neighbor, I've got the same neighbor. But I also agree with you. I think this is something that staff should think about and bring back to the commission to move forward. I don't think we're so we're going to get the language right tonight.
Would it be appropriate to do alternative to?
Would it be appropriate to do alternative to only end it with the modifications as discussed tonight?
Say that again?
Oh, redo, would you do alternative to, and just add the words as discussed this evening?
I need more than just
I was hoping you would say that.
I mean, I'll help you
What about
Describe what you discussed, but just leave it up to me to say what you discussed.
With consideration for what we discussed.
Allowing the total storage on a driveway.
Yes.
Yeah, I think you just need to bring up exactly that, the issue is the seventy-two hours for a vehicle. You don't have to get any further than that, but to say discussed is too broad.
It would have been so simple.
And one reason I'm hedging is because I think we're talking about one, one one standard out of the whole thing. And there is some desire, fairly strong desire to have council review this on December nineteenth. So it can coincide, coincide with the property maintenance code going into force on January first.
Gotcha.
So your next meeting is December twentieth, if you, if you were to not take action and wanted to come back. So we, and you would, you, you have the right to do that. I'm just not sure tonight that this detail is necessary for that. If you want to do that, you can, but we'll be back on December twentieth then.
So Kelly, would you want the driveway exemption to apply to only certain residential overlays?
No, I mean, if it's a single-family home, I would say it applies to a single-family home or a two-family home, whatever it is. Really, we're just talking about one and two-family homes, parking lots for apartments, I mean, they're the same thing, they're not driveways. So we would have to yeah, so like I said, every time you think about it, there is another level to it.
Are you interested in the motion? Oh.
What's that?
Are we ready for a motion?
Sure, do you have one?
I was hoping you were gonna do it. Okay, if you're entertaining motions, I'll make one.
Yeah.
I make the motion that we go with alternative to, recommend that the city council adopt the public nuisance property maintenance-related amendments to the zoning ordinance with modifications of staff should consider
The city council should consider.
City councils should consider the exemption of parking a vehicle on a driveway and the issue of the seventy, seventy-two hour standard. Does that work with
Storage of a vehicle?
Parking.
Stor-
Parking.
Parking? Park, parking beyond seventy-two hours, because that's what you're really, you're not thinking, right? We're saying it's storage, you guys aren't thinking
That's right, this was, this was the Kelly language of the second one. Okay.
So, we know what you meant, we can convey that if that's what passes.
That, that would be my motions. Don't ask me to repeat them.
So I'd second that.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion, a second, is there any additional discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. All right. Thank you, Julie. All right.
All right, so our final text amendment of the night, it's been a great night.
Yeah, so
Save the best for last.
Zoning text amendment for access road paving waiver for Prairie View Industrial Center.
Yeah, so just to give a little background, this is a specific request in relation to Alliant Energy as we describe in this report, but, but staff thinks it has broader implications. So we're supporting the option where we define this on, on a broad basis to be for all zoning, all the zoning districts across the city, not just for the Prairie View Industrial Center. Alliant wants to build their substation in that area, so they're okay if that's the situation. We think it has some merit to think about this in other places across the city. So what we're proposing is that a basic utility, which could be a water tower by the city, it could be a substation by an energy provider, it could be a pump station for a natural gas line, something that is related to utilities that very rarely has traffic. We currently would require you to pave the access to that facility, no matter how far away it is from a road. So in this case, what Alliant is asking for, and we think is applicable to other places, is a lot of these things are not placed right next to a road. We do want some paved interface with a street intersection there, have a driveway, control track out and other disturbances that occur with gravel or unimproved surfaces. But we want to give the planning director the flexibility then to say, once it gets to the site limits, that there's some discretion to say, yeah, it's not gonna be a nuisance or cause some kind of incompatibility with other uses, because there's rarely, if any, traffic associated with these things. So on a daily basis, you wouldn't see vehicles, on a weekly basis, you probably would. So we, we're recommending to allow that flexibility. That would be alternative one, where it's across the city. Alternative two would be just to limit it to industrial zones where you don't think you would have any sensitive neighbors that are too concerned about whether it's fully paved or not. And this is, is one of, this is an example, I guess, of something that city council is really interested in in the next year, is to look at where flexibility can be added to the to the zoning ordinance. It's, our code's very black and white, either you do it or you don't, there's not, well, it probably is okay in this case. So this is an example where you're giving the discretion to a staff member to make this decision, it's not gonna be objective necessarily, it's gonna be discretionary on subjective basis. But you're gonna probably see more of these things referred to us, probably in a larger package, not just, you know, little things all year long. So I think next year, you're gonna get a broader discussion about what's the, what options can staff use to exercise discretion, and this is a good example of that.
It makes sense to me, one of the things I did when I was looking lists over, so it looked like a Google Earth. And all of our water towers and substations now do not have paved access.
There is one that does.
Well, there's one at the north end of
Top of Hollow has one.
I was like, I'm gonna say, oh, okay, I did catch that one. The one by Moore Park, but it's part of a bike trail and it doesn't look like it's built to the standard.
Yeah, they kind of crossed, they have an unpaved surface that goes to the bike trail that then goes into the
Yeah.
Yeah.
But anyway. Anyway, I thought it made sense, the number one made sense to me.
Just to clarify, so this would allow a driveway that it wouldn't even need to be gravel, it could just be dirt, grass, or
It wouldn't be dirt, we would just have to accept an alternative surface.
Okay.
And they wouldn't want, technically, they wouldn't even want that, because it wouldn't be able to, the type of equipment and things they have to get in out wouldn't, wouldn't work on a dirt road, so. The intent is they would, and for, so the other thing that's gonna come into play is if you don't require pavement, the fire code still requires a, a surface that can support a fire truck. So you'll get a rock base to it that can support a fire truck, so it's not gonna just be dirt trails, that, that won't suffice.
Makes sense, and we'll probably decrease costs, and we'll be great.
That's a big motivation.
I assume is this Alliant Prairie View Industries, that's, I assume, an industrial zone?
It's the I.I., the intensive industrial zone, so it's east by Barilla, that area over there.
Yeah. So either alternative one or two would allow this individual to do what
Alliant would be satisfied with either.
Yeah.
We're saying it has broader applicability than them, so one seemed to make the best sense to us.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
And all that does is it gives you the flexibility, your office the flexibility to allow allow it not to be paved.
Yeah, and, and we gave you language on the last page about how that would work, so there is some situations where I might not agree that it shouldn't be paved, so if it was adjacent to residential and I might not agree that that makes sense with how it's configured, that it is a disturbance to have that for dust or whatever, and that you do need to pave it. So I would continue to have that ability then, or I shouldn't say continue, I would maintain some ability there to, to say, no, I don't need to grant that to you, it's not an absolute.
Any other questions for Kelly? Okay. Anyone have a motion?
I'll move.
Move to recommend alternative one, recommend that the city council amend the standards in section twenty-nine point four oh six, parent eleven. The municipal code by adding language that developers of sites with basic utility uses or other similar uses on sites within all zones across the city can request a reduction in paving or of maneuvering areas subject to planning and housing director discretion.
Second.
Do we have any additional discussion before we vote? No, okay. All in favor of alternative one, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. All right. Thank you, everyone. And now we'll move on to commission comments. Does anyone have any comments?
Well, he's not here, so I'll ask. Do we have anything going on next time?
Since you didn't refer the language back to you, it's unlikely they will have anything on the twentieth.
Okay, great.
All right. Any staff comments?
Just, like I said, there's gonna be, council didn't set their work plan, I think I told you this last time, they, they want to do goal-setting in January and they'll come back to their work plan to look at a lot of zoning issues. One of their concerns is about how flexibility can be incorporated into different zoning standards across the city. So I owe them a report about different options for that, and one of them also is to look at rewriting the zoning courts, zoning code substantially, not just piecemeal. But there's a lot of other things out there too that they're interested in. Next, the December twelfth meeting for council, they are gonna look at requests from the AEDC and the Chamber of Commerce, Commerce representing housing interests to, to have city council consider allowing for tax abatement for new construction, which we've never allowed or supported. Some other issues rolled into that about how we look at supporting new residential development in the city. It doesn't necessarily change zoning standards, but big picture, it's, it's a different, different approach than what we've done in the past, so we'll see what happens on the twelfth, if there's direction out of that. Not not sure any of those things directly would come back to the commission, but possible, but you should just be aware of, that's something that's out there that council's thinking of from a policy perspective.
Okay, great. Okay, anything else? Your motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.